Pursuant to Section 841411 of the Nebraska statutes, the next meeting of the Board of Education of Douglas County School District 0001 and the Board of Educational Service Unit Number 19 will be held on Wednesday, February 21st, 2018 at 6:30 PM in the Board Meeting Room at the Teacher Administrative Center, 3215 Cumming Street. The agenda will be kept current and available for the public inspection in the office of the Secretary of the Board of Education at the Administrative Building during regular working hours. Pursuant to Section 841412 of Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby informed that a current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted in the Board Meeting Room on the North Wall. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll have Vice President America lead us in our vision and mission.
All right, first is our vision, every student, every day, prepared for success. And our mission statement, Omaha Public Schools prepares all students to excel in college, career, and life.
Roll call, Mr. Ray.
Cassidy?
Here.
Gadding?
Present.
Hallman?
Here.
America?
Present.
Pearlman?
Here.
Ryan?
Present.
Scanlon?
Smith?
Snow?
Here.
Aide, present.
Mr. Scanlon did let the Board know that he will be late to tonight's meeting. I will entertain a motion to excuse his tardiness.
So moved. Second.
I have a roll call.
Smith?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Gadding?
Aye.
Hallman?
Aye.
America?
Aye.
Pearlman?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Aide, aye.
Thank you. Moving on to Board and Superintendent Communications. Connie Kanoki?
I'd like to submit for your review the financial statements for the district for the month of January 2018.
Thank you. Mr. Evans?
Thank you, Mr. President. First off, just to thank Kennedy Elementary again, Principal Tony Gunter for providing the violent sprouts to the Board. As part of Board appreciation, they wanted to start off the meeting with a serenading of our Board volunteers and thanking them. Also, at each of the Board tables, we ask several of our schools to share with them some of their thoughts about things they appreciate. And in front of every Board member is some samples of schools, particularly our new schools, Western Hills and Belle Ryan, thanking them for their new school. I've got a couple of them in front of me, some of them that suggest that they not only thank you for the new school, but they want you to know that they truly love you. That's the kindergarten class at Western Hills. I also have a note from the principal at Belle Ryan, Dear OPS School Board, I want to extend a huge thank you for supporting our bond issue, making our new school possible. Belle Ryan is a beautiful place to work, learn, and a school our community can be proud of. Thank you for understanding the needs of our students and staff and realizing that our students deserve the best. Sincerely, Charlotte Johnson, the principal. And finally, I have behind me a piece of art from Western Hills. To the Board, from the art class, for the school board to put on display. So, thank you, Western Hills, if you're watching on TV. We'll post this in the Boardroom somewhere.
Yes, indeed. Thank you again.
So, again, thank you, Board, for your service. And I always want to make the public aware that this is a volunteer role, even though many of you put in what would be full-time hours of service, it is a volunteer position. So, we thank you for that effort. And the next thing I wanted to thank the Board on is actually something that will be voted on later, and that's the finalization of Dr. Cheryl Logan, who's going to be joining us officially on July 1 and unofficially prior to that. I've had the opportunity now over the last few days, including today, to spend time with her, whether it's texting or on the phone or person-to-person, and I just continue to be more and more impressed with her ability to understand where we're at, where we're going, and how we're going to get there. So, I want to congratulate the Board on a fantastic job and really doing this in a phenomenal way. And I'm looking forward to continue building the transition plan with Dr. Logan, and I know that she's planning to submit something to the Board in the near future. So, I wanted you to know that we are already off and running, and I was surprised to see that she was even able to get out of Philadelphia, because I thought the flights would be stopped after last night's game, that Philadelphia would be shut down. And she did share with me that school is going to be shut down, because they're going to have a parade that's going to shut down most of the city, I think, after last night's game. So, we were fortunate enough to have her join us, and we're going to do school visits tomorrow, and I'll be sending that schedule in just a moment to all the Board members so you know where she's going to be tomorrow morning. So, thank you again, School Board and Dr. Logan. And with that, that's the end of my responses. Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Moving on to Board Members. Ms. America?
I have really briefly, just to give a heads up to anyone here or who's watching at home or watches the web stream, that this Friday, February 9th, from 5:00 to 8:30, is the annual Bryan High, always a Bear alumni event. So, all Bryan alums are welcome to come back to the school and receive admission to the girls' and boys' basketball games, socialize, and meet fellow Bear alumni. So, I hope to see some folks there.
Thank you. Ms. Gadding?
Okay, I do have something, and I don't have all the information, but the Burke High School play, which is always the musical, which is always phenomenal, will be that weekend, February, I believe, 23rd. So, I just want to encourage people to get out to that. Last year, they did Shrek, and this year, they have a great performance planned for everyone. So, if you can attend, it would be wonderful.
Thank you. Mr. Pearlman?
Okay.
Anyone else? I had the opportunity to attend the 18th African American History Challenge this past weekend at North High. We had all our middle schools present, as well as high school. And if I'm correct, I believe Mr. Smith attended as well. And Beverage, I believe, won middle school. They're always fantastic at this competition. And Creighton Prep, I believe, won the championship for the high school. So, I mean, these students have been, speaking to some of the students, they spend probably about four to five months prepping for this. And then some of the students, if they raise enough money, qualify to go to Nationals, Regionals, and the Nationals in DC. So, kudo to the students and the family members that came out this Saturday for the challenge. Up next, we have public comment. We have two speakers. One second. We have two speakers who have submitted request to speak forms. The Board has adopted Policy 8346, which provides public comment for a period of one hour. The same policy limits individuals to a maximum of five minutes. We ask that you respect the time limit. Mr. Ray will let you know when you have 1 minute remaining and 30 seconds remaining. If you're in need of an interpreter, please let Mr. Ray know, and we'll be provided for you. If the subject of your public comment is related to a particular student or staff member, we ask that you not mention the student or staff member by name, and instead provide the information to Mr. Ray. As a reminder, we ask that you please spell your name and state your address before you begin your public comment. It is now 6:45. Our first speaker is Mary McHale. Welcome back.
My name is Mary P. McHale, and I live at 5009 Isard Street, M.C., capital H-A-L-E, in Omaha, Nebraska. And I thank the OPS School Board members and OPS staff for all you do for the students of OPS. I am here tonight to talk about the Transition Program, which has approximately 166 students in three locations who receive special education services between 18 and 21 years of age. The purpose of the Transition Program is to provide the students with jobs and life skills training. I don't know about you all, but I sort of feel like that person who used to go to every city council meeting and always spoke. I know I haven't been here as much as he had, but I feel like I've been here a lot. When I looked on the OPS website for tonight's meeting agenda, to say that I am thrilled that a new transition site is finally included in an OPS bond issue would be an understatement. I immediately thought, thank you for making the correct decision. If there are any Board members who have not yet visited the PVA or Career Center sites, I would encourage you to do so, as all of you have students in that program, and that you can see for yourself that a new building location is the right thing to do for the transition students. I would also encourage Dr. Logan, who's out here in the audience somewhere, to visit all three transition sites at some point in time, so that she can see for herself their learning environment for students receiving special education services. I will be optimistic and thank all of you in advance for adding a new transition site, getting out of the PVA building and the Career Center, to the proposed 2018 OPS bond issue. As you know, as you are aware, this is something that has been sorely needed since prior to the 2014 OPS bond issue. I thank you for making the decision in your workshops to combine both the PVA and Career Center transition sites and making it one site. I will be an advocate for this bond issue, and will tell my friends and family that one of the components of the bond issue is to replace the two current transition sites. And when I explain about the learning conditions and ask them, if they wouldn't want a child of theirs to go to a site like that, why would you think it was right for Daniel to go to a site like that? I know they will agree. Even though it will be too late for my son, as he will age out of the educational system in May 2019, I'm advocating for those students to come after my son, who deserve to learn in a welcoming environment with the same learning conditions that the general education students have. As I speak these words, I know that I am my mother's daughter, who was a strong advocate for children. I learned from her that one person can make a difference. Sometimes it takes four and a half years, apparently. But, thank you for making the difference in the lives of the future transition students. Every student, every day, prepared for success. I truly believe this statement is now applicable for all OPS students. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mary. Up next is Dan Sitzman.
I'm Dan Sitzman, 103 South 51st Street. Last name is S-I-T-Z-M-A-N. I am speaking tonight as an OPS graduate and a parent of two current OPS secondary-level student athletes, who, among their many activities, academic and athletic, participate on school swim teams. There are many challenges before you and us as a community, as you on the Board of Education wrestle with many decisions with major financial and social implications, such as the bond issue and trying to rectify Osters, so that the district can continue to attract and retain educators passionate about teaching and coaching a diverse student population. As an advocate of healthy lifestyles, I am pleased to read the memo of understanding about the OPS YMCA cooperation to build and share a swimming pool at the proposed West High School. Even though Bellevue, Millard, and Lincoln include pools in all of their high schools, OPS did not keep up with pool needs when girls' swimming was added to Nebraska high school sports in 1973, doubling the amount of teams that are competing. To build two new high schools and one new middle school without accommodating additional swim teams would be a missed opportunity to address the omissions of the past and will exacerbate inequities in the facilities for many years to come. Our area supports swimming, but we're not seeing the support for all students within our district. In 2020, Omaha will host the fourth consecutive USA Swimming Olympic Trials. But the students who attend schools, especially east of 84th Street, are at a disadvantage if they are inspired by the swim trials. Some of you may argue that few students are interested in swimming, so few to justify avoiding expenses for swim teams at some schools. Currently, each swim season, seven high school girls' varsity teams, seven high school boys' varsity teams, and 12 middle school teams share eight pools in the district. Consider how access influences interest. Without pools in high schools, middle school students who tried middle school swimming but don't make the high school varsity team do not have an opportunity to progress because there's no JV team due to lack of space. High school teams start practice late in the afternoon, about the time other district sports teams end practice. Some public high school coaches have a building key that, with permission of a building administrator, allows them and their student athletes to access home pools for practice on weekends, mornings, and during breaks. Five OPS high school swim coaches have to consult with their principal and athletic director to request another building's principal and building engineer so that they can get access to another school building in order to practice at a middle school pool. The results of these extra logistical hurdles means that most OPS teams east of 84th Street conduct practice only 75% of the times as teams west of 84th Street, both within our district and outside of our district. Two OPS school leaders who I've spoken with during OPS swim meets this season have told me they've investigated ways to provide alternative sites for their school teams, but the cost is about $6,000 per month to rent non-school pools. As one East Omaha High School swimmer told me recently, swimming is a rich person's sport. Several metro high schools with on-campus pools west of 84th Street this year installed starting blocks with a total price tag of $15,000 to $20,000. Meanwhile, schools east of 84th Street maintain decades-old starting blocks and equipment just to start the race. The coach of one East Omaha High School team has to go in early on meet days to fiddle with wires to try and get a starting system older than him to work for a dual meet. Another high school east of 84th Street uses a starter system constructed by the coach's father. We can appreciate employees who are thrifty with money by keeping old equipment running and not having to rent pool space, but doing so because there are no other viable options is disappointing.
30 seconds.
The cost to build and maintain a swimming pool is great. I do not call for equality in swimming pool facilities across high schools, but that equitable solutions may be found, especially for high schools east of 84th Street. With all aspects of academic and athletic facilities and programs in the discussion of the new bond issue without addressing the inequity that developed over the past two generations, the Omaha Public Schools at risk to widen the opportunity gaps for OPS students between us and other school districts. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda, I will now entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda before us.
Before we do, I would ask that we remove item H-14 and place it on the regular agenda. Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I, H-15, I apologize.
Is there a reason why? Mr. Pearlman?
I just want some discussion about, I think it's a very important item. I'm pleased to see an item on here, expanding early childhood education. I think it's a great partnership all the way around between our district and the private-public partnership that we're seeing here. And I just want a little bit of discussion about what this means for the district and the opportunities it presents for the youngest students in our district.
Okay.
Mr. Snow?
Yes, ma'am.
Would it be appropriate to move H-14, 15, and 16, since they all kind of?
That's what I was thinking, they're all together.
They're all together, and we should probably vote as a block, almost.
Sure, no, absolutely. I thought about that. I just didn't know if it'd be more cumbersome doing it that way, but that makes sense.
So, we'll be moving H-14, 15, and 16. You good, Mr. Ray?
Yes. It'll be just one minute, though.
Okay, no worries. Back to the consent agenda. I will now entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda before us.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Gadding, second by Ms. Ryan. Any extensions? Roll call.
Snow?
Aye.
Cassidy?
Aye.
Gadding?
Aye.
Hallman?
Aye.
America?
Aye.
Pearlman?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Scanlon?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Nine, aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. Motion carries. My computer's moving all over the place. All right, moving on to item I-1A, Superintendent's Contract, Dr. Cheryl Logan. I will now entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Pearlman, second by Ms. Gadding. Discussion?
Just very briefly, I think the overall proposal is an excellent one. I'll be favoring it, voting for it without really any hesitation. I would just note an objection to the travel, excuse me, the car allowance, vehicle allowance, if you will. But other than that, it's an excellent contract proposal, and I'll be voting in favor for it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing on, roll call, Mr. Ray.
Cassidy?
Aye.
Gadding?
Aye.
Hallman?
Aye.
America?
Aye.
Pearlman?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Scanlon?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Nine, aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to I-1B. And we're going to give them a minute or two. Mr. Ray has to run back and forth and change the screen for us.
Mr. President, while they're setting up the screen for the slides, I just wanted to thank the Board Members. We had an opportunity to meet one-on-one with all School Board Members, and of course, we've had workshops invested in this topic, and the Board has invested a lot of time and energy to understand and help guide and direct staff on this, and so I appreciate that. And I hope that tonight's presentation capsulates what we've heard from each of you as individuals, as well as in group workshops. It's been a journey, but I think we're to the end of that journey. So, we appreciate the Board's support, help, and guidance, and hopefully what we present tonight is reflective of those conversations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Let that, Mr. Mark Summer?
As always, thank you for having us this evening. I have put together a kind of short PowerPoint presentation. I think it's a record for me. It's really three slides of information. Most of the information I'm going to share tonight is really just recapping a lot of the conversations that we've had over the last six to eight months regarding the Phase II Facility Plan. What you see on the slideshow is the same information, of course, that's in the Recommended Facility Plan. Of course, it's posted publicly for everyone to see. But I just wanted to take a few minutes and recap how we got to this point with this particular summary. As it sits now, the recommended plan is $409,975,841. And of course, you Board Members know that that value has moved around a little bit depending on different options and different scenarios that you folks have asked us to look at, a review, and kind of run to ground. But just to go back several years, as part of the 2014 Bond Program, there was a lot of work done to really assess the overall district need, not just for the next five years, but a little bit broader master plan. And through that process, it was identified that the district needed a billion, $1.1 to $1.2 billion, to really address not only the existing facility needs, future growth needs in the form of new construction, and then if there's different program expansions in early childhood, and a lot of different things that were talked about in 2014, all of those dollars would be needed. Knowing that the Omaha marketplace couldn't really afford a $1.1 billion plan, through several versions, the Board of Education made the decision to really kind of break up the bond program into two components, if you will. Currently, you're about two-thirds of the way through the Phase I Bond Program, a $421 million reference, that is referendum, pardon me, that is going very well. Over $300 million committed and well over $250 million spent. So, that current program's turning very well. In that same timeframe, the Phase II Plan was also put together. So, that was the base for this plan, the initial base. From that time to now, though, several things have kind of changed. The district contracted DLR, a local design firm, a regional design firm, to go into each existing facility and do a boots-on-the-ground assessment. It's really a tool that the district hadn't had in the past. Previous to that, really as the buildup to the 2014 Bond Program was ongoing, there was a lot broader type of assessment information available. It really wasn't drilled down into the specific components inside of the building. So, what the DLR assessment has allowed us to do was to overlay that information. And if you recall, there were really three kind of priorities that we focused on. Priority one were immediate needs that needed to be addressed. Priority two were items that needed to be addressed within a year. And priority three were two years to five years out. So, when we looked at kind of the second piece of the capital plan, we looked all the way out to that five-year timeline, if you will. But again, just to underscore, what the assessment really allowed the district to do is focus in on the most critical components inside of all of the facilities that was within the Phase II Plan. So, the scope inside of the Recommended Facility Plan with regard to the existing buildings is really focused solely on air handlers, boilers, chillers, electrical systems, all the buildings, infrastructure. There's not reconfiguration of classrooms and additions. There are some additions in some locations, and we'll talk a little bit about those. But the majority of the capital improvement work is really focused on antiquated, critical equipment that needs to be replaced to ensure that the facilities continue to operate the way they need to. In addition to that, we've sat and reviewed some enrollment forecasting at a bunch of different locations within the school district over the last six to eight months, and really focused in on the locations that need additional space. Lewis and Clark and Morton are at the middle school level. Of course, they'll receive additions to offset some portables on their campuses and also allow for additional 6-8 participation. There's also several additions planned at the elementary level, Pine Wood, Masters, and Edison. All of those will help relieve their portable count or eliminate it at those campuses. And then there's also the real focus of capacity relief, which is the new facility. So, there are so there are two new high schools, 1,500 student high schools within this plan, one new middle school, 1,000 student middle school, and two new elementary schools, both at our 600, and if you recall, as part of Phase One procurement of the property to build those schools, where it was all completed with the exception of the 42nd and U of 42nd and T, the gateway site, the district previously owned that, so largely Phase Two, from a new build perspective, is finishing the work that was started in the, the initial phase from a site procurement perspective. The other thing that you'll find in this plan over the last several months, there's, there's been a lot of different options discussion, so I just want to kind of quickly remind everybody of what's in the plan, I know we've talked about this in some of the, the smaller group meetings, but I just wanted to make sure everybody understood, inside of the plan, one of the components, someone mentioned earlier about a partnership with the YMCA, so at the 156 and Ida Street site, there's a 4 million dollar contribution from the district as part of that partnership with the YMCA, there's several spaces inside of the high school, a programmer square footage plan that would be increased in size to accommodate Y programming, in addition to an aquatic center that would have a minimum of a six-lane pool, spectator seating, some recreational or some leisure swimming areas, that would be part of the overall school facility and operate in conjunction with the school. Transition program, we heard a little bit about that, in this plan, there's dollars to fund moving the transition program out of PVA, and of course, the Career Center, a house here at TAC to a different location, there's dollars in here for the construction of 11 classrooms, an 11-classroom addition at Highland, 10-classroom addition at Spring Lake, nine-classroom addition at Morton, a three-classroom addition at Edison, along with building out their safe area into classrooms, four-classroom addition at Masters, along with building their safe area out as well as classrooms, and three additional classrooms at the Pine Wood Campus. So that's just kind of a, an overview of the different parts that make up the overall facility plan that's before you.
Mr. Summer, if I could just kind of chime in, just as a, kind of again, tying this up together, in the 421 million dollar bond issue passed in 2014, that was fire, life, and safety, at that time, we had not done the DLR study to really break down all of those other capital improvement needs that are listed on that, that, that we have more detail on, but I want the, the public to know, because we may have some folks that say, well, why didn't we do that in Phase One, some of these prioritized needs were not understood until the board gave us permission to do the DLR study, where we sent engineers and architects into every single school, this, school in our district, and did a prioritization list of specific things that were high needs, such as in some sites, it's boilers that really need to be replaced, at some sites, it's roofs and parking lots, and that's what's reflected there, we have all those details, but in 2013, when we were developing 2014 bond issue, we really didn't have that, part of it was because we had not done that extensive investment in that prioritization need, so I wanted to mention that, that that's where those numbers come from, and you mentioned it as well, Mr. Summer, but I know I've had individuals say, gosh, I wish I'd have known, we could have included that in Phase One, some public that, that haven't known what happened with the DLR study, so I wanted to make that a, a, a public statement. The other piece, I want to remind everyone that again, Phase One did not deal with overcrowding, it didn't meet the needs of our schools that have over 200, across the district, we have over 200 portables, across the district, we have 165 portables at the elementary level alone, not much of that was impacted by Phase One, there was some impacting, we were able to remove some, but this hits a large part of that portable classroom utilization that we really want to move away from, and the other piece that this addresses is the long term of, this year, for example, we had over 800 new students, if this trend chart continues on, we're going to be looking at five to 800 new students a year, and already, we have a large percentage of our district that's overcrowded, already, we have over 200 portables, this helps us with that growth trend chart, so it's really not just about today's needs, it's about tomorrow's needs, it's about an opportunity to, to bring back some of our students that currently have selected other sites, because we didn't have space, to be quite honest, so this is an opportunity to have, have space for our young people right here in OPS.
The, the next piece of information, it's, it's not part of the package, but it is, it is a proposed master schedule for the referendum, and this is something that we reviewed during the last board workshop, there, there's a couple of changes that have occurred, and I just want to kind of point them out, probably the most significant from an overall schedule, we have visited, let me go back, I apologize, one of the things that the board asked us to do on the plan was to make sure that we really understood the market costs that were coming on, so during the November 20th workshop, we were asked to go back and refine some of the estimates specifically associated with the high schools, so throughout the last couple of months, we've been working with the architects that, that worked on the conceptual design, to continue to define how much earth would be removed, what do site utilities look like, what requirements might the city have, what fees are associated with the development, what does asbestos remediation look like at the Ryan campus, and all the different parts that make up the overall budget, so all of that information was gathered together, the, the district contracted or hired four construction companies to get market-based estimates, and all of their information has been compiled and it's reflected in the document that you see, what we saw is about a 60 million dollar construction budget for the building, and then a, a range of nine to 11 million dollars from a site perspective, nine being 156 and Ida, 11 being the 60th and L, again, knowing that 60th and L would have a little bit of additional cost, I, I just wanted to make sure I, I followed up on that request, not only did we refine the new construction costs or study those closures, we also went back through every capital project and really understood what kind of abatement would be necessary for this specific scope, is there any swing space requirements, or is there any advantage of swing space related to this type of scope, what does the commissioning look like, and where does it look like from a scheduling perspective, so apologize for stepping back, but I just wanted to make sure I mentioned that work that we did there. Now back to the schedule, the most significant shift is during the process of working with the construction managers on the pricing effort, we also had them provide some input on scheduling, there, there are really two factors related to the overall referendum, it's the two high schools, is we were trying to get those just right in the timing, mainly because they're the largest scopes that the district has, and they're going to be large in the marketplace, they're not just large in the referendum, but in overall project size in the, in Omaha, and there are really two factors that we look at, one is market saturation, saturation, how saturated or how busy is the marketplace, and then the other piece is escalation of cost, the further out you take something, the more it costs in escalation, so in our conversations with the contractors, what they've indicated to us is that between, you know, June of 18 and June of 19, from a saturation perspective, probably not going to make much of a difference, so why risk the potential escalation, so what, what you see in this schedule is, is we brought the 156 and Ida Streets project forward, or, or to the left, if you will, and so it's scheduled, it was scheduled to be started the same time as the 60th and L Street project, what we'd want to do if the referendum passes in May is amend the designer's contract for the full design services, and then we'd want to bring the construction managers on board right away, historically, the district's waited till about the end of schematic design, but we think there's some advantages of bringing those folks on earlier because the concept design is done, and now they can help us analyze what type of structure might be better, what is more efficient for the foundations, can we get some early site development packages going, and there's just a lot of advantages to having those experts right there in those meetings and discussions with the engineers and architects, so moving tho, moving that project back provides us that opportunity. Two more things I'll quickly mention on the schedule, we also tried to maximize work at sites that we are already at, for example, Benson, Burke, and Bryan, those projects are going to be ongoing, if the referendum passes in May, of course, with board approval, there'd be an opportunity to, to translate this right into work, we're already there, folks are kind of use of the disruption and coordinating around construction, not a lot of value of leaving for a couple of years and then kind of coming back at a later date. And then the third piece is, we, we've tried to coordinate a completion of projects that makes sense from potential boundary changes, or where there is going to be some great configuration or enrollment movement, just so we don't have to wait for one project to finish, oh, we can't make that enrollment change because this next project isn't business, we tried to align those for, so the completion of the elementary schools in South Omaha, we tried to align those with, with Highland and the Spring Lake and kind of all of those projects around there. So that's just a, a quick review of the proposed master schedule, and really, the last slide I have here are the couple of next steps that, that we see happening, of course, if, if the board approves the, the recommended plan this evening, the OPS staff and legal would get to work on drafting the actual ballot language, and then they would need to recommend board approval at the next board meeting, the board would have to consider and approve that language and ultimately authorize the staff to file on their behalf with the election commission, and then that needs to be filed, if I understand it correctly, it needs to be filed before the first of March, or no later than the first of March is the filing deadline. So I know we've had a lot of conversation over the last, again, six or eight months, so I didn't want to dive into every single project and every single detail, wanted to kind of just briefly recap and hit some of the high points and some of the components of the schedule, and then see if there's any questions, and take it from there, unless you had anything else, Mr. Evans.
Any questions? Ms. Gadding?
I don't know that I always have questions, but sometimes I have comments, right?
Questions or comments, my apologies.
So, first, I want to go back to what Mr. Evans said, and I want to thank all the board members who, a few are here today, but a few have gone on before us, who voted for the DLR study to be done, I think that was a critical step in November of 2016 to really understanding what our true needs were in the buildings, we didn't really have a grasp on that, and so I just want to publicly acknowledge and thank those folks for helping us to move forward. I want to also just note that I'm very appreciative of Jacobs and you all for going back and taking a look at those specific high school costs, I felt like those numbers were a little squishy before, and so I feel like now we have a much better understanding of what those numbers are, and I certainly appreciate that. I also want to just put out an appreciation to the district for removing the Career Center items, I think that that's truly Perkins Probably Fund money, or industry-specific money that should be focused on that, and not muddy the waters of the bond with that particular item in there. I'm also very appreciative of the fact that the district really put in the transition program that they felt was best, I think that, that recommendation from you all to us, you all know what it should be versus us having that decision to make, we don't manage that every day, and so I'm appreciative of seeing how that came out and of getting it in there, and I think Mrs. McHale is very, very happy about that, right, she's, she's all ready to get her yard signed in the, in the yard next week, so, or tomorrow, maybe, so, so we're, I, I'm thankful for that, I'm also, want to say that I'm very appreciative to Mr. Evans for working on this Y partnership, I'm looking forward to getting more details, but I think that it's, it's a collaborative way to move forward, and so I would encourage Dr. Logan to work very closely with Mr. Evans to make sure we keep all of that together. Just a few points as we move forward that I just want to kind of bring up, I, I look forward to having Jacobs work with students in both of the high school areas where the two high schools will go, that are specific to that particular attendance area, that can give input on the things that they would want, so that they would stay within the district versus going to, say, Ralston, or Millard, or someplace like that, so I'm looking forward to the actual students who live in that area getting to be a big part of the communication there, as well as the board members who are in those two areas. As we think about what Mr. Sitzman said regarding pools east of 84th Street, I think Mr. Evans can attest that I have been in his ear and communicated very heavily with him over the last probably two months regarding my concerns with pool space east of 84th Street, and my concerns about what that does for our student population, so as I have spent time kind of understanding more what's happening in the sports world, what I have gathered is that a lot of parents are moving their children away from contact sports, so we see on the East Coast even districts that aren't participating in some contact sports because they can't get enough kids to go out for football, but what we are seeing is significant numbers increasing on the non-contact sport side, and so I just want to continue to work with Mr. Evans, work with the board to see what we can do, especially thinking about the work that will be happening at Norris and at Bryan Middle, and whether or not we shouldn't be thinking about expansion of viewing area, the blocks, just some of those things that are going to be really critical to those schools being able to participate more robustly, because they probably will have more high school students there, and really making sure that we know where today, that we plan ahead for where our high school students will be practicing. The other thing that I know, Mr. Evans has seen me bring forward, and I don't know where we're going to get to, but is really that whole conversation that parents constantly come to me with from all of our high schools, is the issue of our middle school program and how we run the timing of that, and as Mr. Sitzman pointed out, even though kids may participate in middle school, they don't get to participate at the high school level because there's not enough room, so my concern has always been, why do we run all of those programs at the same time when maybe we should be really thinking outside the box and doing things a little bit differently than we've done before, and I know it's a challenge, and I know that that's probably a lot of conversation with ADs who may not necessarily understand swimming as much, but I can tell you that at Central, I, it was pointed out to me that it's their largest sports team, and, and granted, you've got boys and girls, but it's larger than football, so I think we really have to be mindful of the sports that are growing and, and some of the things, and I know that North ended up having to cut a number of students because they didn't have space, and that's really not where we want this to go, so I just want to encourage on that front, that east of 84th Street piece, the next point I want to bring up is please know that I'm an advocate for removing portables, I will vote for this bond and the removal of portables, the one thing I just want to continue to raise is questions about structure of the day at our secondary schools to address space allocation, so can the structure of the day end up resulting in removal of portables? And, so in my sub-district and in, and the Burke attendance area, we certainly have portables at the secondary level, and I guess I just want to make sure that we're really wisely using the structure of the day, while we still need to meet the needs of the teachers for their play-in time, I think there's probably things we could do outside the box, and so what I'd like us to do is just take risks on thinking about doing things differently, especially as we know we've got financial issues coming up and constraints. I, I think one, I, so I'm very appreciative that Jacobs has been working on, and Mark, you specifically mentioned working on the timing of this, and you specifically mentioned bringing folks on earlier than we typically have before, and so what I would love to encourage is that both of those high schools, it would be wonderful if those of us who live in those areas can say to our constituents, for voting purposes, hey, your sixth graders can go to this building, because once you start really dropping down into that fifth grade or fourth grade level, it gets a little bit tougher on those selling points, so I would really encourage us to look at both of those buildings, think about things that we could do in phases, think about incentives that can be offered, and think about whether or not we can't bring that timeline up one more year, and I, and I go back to the materials, and I know we've talked about this before, that we put out before, we're now in a three-year delay versus a one year, and so I would like to see us try to pull that back and at least get to maybe a 2021 date if possible, knowing that I've got a high school that hasn't been voted on yet that will be opening in 2020, sitting on my border, and that's a tough, that's a tough, that's a tough issue for me, and so anything that we can do to stage and phase the work and continue to bring that down to a level where we could at least say to our sixth graders, you will get to participate in this, I would appreciate. But I'm very appreciative of the work that has gone into this, I want to thank the Jacobs staff, I want to thank Mr. Evans, because I know, I've had lots of conversations with all of you about some of the work that I thought needed to be done, and so I'm very appreciative of seeing those numbers tightened up and, and just a little bit firmer, and I appreciate you going out to the construction folks and getting that work done, so I look forward to continuing to get more of those details finessed as we move into probably that April 1st timeline, so that we've got things a little bit more solidified, so that as we're out, as the weather hopefully gets better, and we're out sticking out yards yard signs and campaigning, that we have more specifics we can take to the voters. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Gotti. Ms. Merrick?
I just had a couple of things. One, just because I've had a lot of people ask this question, and Mr. Evans brought up that we saw about an 800-student growth this year in the district, and that's not a one-time spike. That's something that we've seen continuously over five to 800 students every year, and that's something I do want to thank our research department specifically, because they monitor birth rates, what percentage of students from an area usually attend OPS, so that they can make those forward-going projections. Because I know we, you mentioned our previous bond issue was really bringing what we had up to where it needed to be. This is really planning for our future and the future, that we've done research, we know the kids for these middle and high, middle school and high schools are already in our district. There are already in seats in our elementary school classrooms, a lot of them in portable in elementary school classrooms. And then as a, as a former east of 84th Street swimmer, I have a new term for myself, I, when I was reviewing the timeline for the middle school and just thinking about, I think Mr. Sitzman mentioned the 2020 Olympics, I think we have a really good opportunity to maybe try to form some partnerships and work to harness that, because we're scheduled to start design for that middle school in 2019 and construction in 2020, of maybe we can find a way to do a partnership at that new site, or have someone sponsor maybe getting one of the pools that's used during the trials, because there are several Murtha pools that are usually used during the trials that different, other school districts around the country have purchased, or other community organizations have purchased. So, maybe there's some opportunities for us to work within that, to do some creative things as well.
Thank you, Ms. Merrick. Ms. Cassidy?
Well, mine's just more of a comment than questions. I won't put you on the hot seat.
Thank you.
Part of what drew me, and I guess my, one of my biggest concerns with wanting to join this board, was the severe overcrowding, specifically in my area. So, this bond really speaks to that. I mean, we've been, how many months, I guess, hit the ground running when I started? We've been hammering at this bond. I just want to say thank you to Jacobs, Dr. Turnquist, Mr. Warnike, Superintendent Evans, because from a new person, I have no idea how these bonds started, all the work that's gone into the process, you know, and just watching it all unfold has been very eye-opening, and the public does not see any of those steps from behind the scenes, but it is very intense. It is very well-thought-out, like Lacey mentioned, there's research that goes into this. I also want to thank the public for their patience. As I learned coming onto the board and really looking at this bond, a lot of the things that we faced were issues that were not dealt with from past board members, past boards. So, we've been playing catch-up, and I think that we've, we've done our best to try to play catch-up as, you know, as well as we can, and I think that this bond addresses not only the overcrowding and the pool, and unfortunately, you know, money doesn't grow on trees, we have had to make some really hard decisions. Reality comes into play, and you can't put a pool everywhere, you just can't, but I hope that people look at this bond, and some of the issues are glamorous, new pools, new high schools, new construction, some are not so glamorous, you know, boilers. But we've, I think with the DLR assessment, it has really helped to address the needs of several schools, and it hits and touches a lot of different schools throughout our district, some more than others, but I hope that the public can see that we've really, we've really tried to deal with realistically what we're facing, you know, money-wise, and make the best decisions that we can for all students, past, present, future, to come. It's been a great process, and I think that we are all excited to go out and put yard signs up and sell this bond, and create more space for students that really need it. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Cassidy. Mr. Pearlman?
Thank you. I just want to start off by thanking all the members of the community who stepped forward and advocated for the things that they wanted to see in this bond. I'll point out Ms. McHale first. The first time I ever spoke with her was August of 2016, when I knocked on her door, and she introduced me to the situation with her family and what she's been advocating for, for a long time, so really proud to call her a neighbor, and Mr. Sitzman as well, and everyone in my sub-district who contacted me and let me know what they would like to see, what's important to them. And I also want to thank the staff as well, that it has been a tremendous amount of work over the course of the last year to put these things together, and throughout the process, board members had different priorities, and we didn't always agree on what we wanted to see in the bond, but that's to be expected, and actually, that's a good thing. I don't think anyone would want us to just look at a $409 million package and say, okay, that's good, and put it in front of voters without giving it serious consideration and looking at not only the cost, but also the opportunity cost, because when we're talking about spending any taxpayer dollars, we also have to look at what we may face on the other end of those things, and we are all acutely aware of the budget challenges that we face, and the schools will have a cost to operate them, but those are questions I've asked, and I'm confident in the answers that I've gotten as far as the district's ability to pay for it. I know this community has always supported public education, and they will continue to do so, and I just want the public to know that we have asked the hard questions throughout the past six to 12 months, and we've gotten the answers, and we're all united in moving forward in this bond. You know, a phrase that comes to mind is you can't let the perfect be the enemy of the good, and that's always something we always have to keep in mind. You know, the pool issue has come up more than anything else, and the pool will be in one area of the city, but it will help alleviate the pressures throughout the city. So, it won't just help one area of the city, and we all know, as Ms. Cassidy pointed out, the dire need for more space in South Omaha, it is a growing district, and so at the end of the day, this is not just a good proposal, it's a very good proposal, it's one that's responsible, and it's one that's needed now, and it's something I believe that we all not only support, but support very strongly. So, I just want to thank, again, the staff and everyone in the community who gave their input, and we listened, and this is a great proposal that I'm proud to stand behind.
Thank you, Mr. Pearlman. Any other comments or questions? Okay. I will now entertain a motion to approve item I-1B. Ms. Merrick?
I move approval of the Phase II bond plan, including capital improvements, additions, and renovations in designated existing facilities, renovation of a leased site for the transition program, and construction of five new facilities, including two elementary schools, one middle school, and two high schools, and all attached documents, including the OPS YMCA letter of intent regarding 156th and Ida.
Sound moved.
We have a motion by Ms. Merrick, second by Ms. Gotti. Roll call, Mr. Ray.
Ryan?
Aye.
Scanlon?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Cassidy?
Aye.
Gotti?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Merrick?
Aye.
Pearlman?
Aye.
Nine? Aye.
Thank you. I would like to thank, motion carries. I would like to thank all my colleagues. This is a thankless job, and you put in a lot of time and effort, meeting with your constituents, going to bond meetings, meeting with Jacobs and Mr. Evans, taking time out of your workday to be educated and brought up to speed on this. Four years ago, we voted on the first bond, and it was a two-part, and today, we are vote, we just passed the second part. So, I thank everybody for this. This is not just about us, it's about the teachers with the overcrowded classrooms, the students with overcrowdedness, as well as building schools for the students we've yet to serve. So, thank you guys so much. Moving on to item I-1C. Mr. Evans, have you start off first.
I'm sorry, I forgot we pulled those items off consent. The item that we've got to talk about, and I know I've got some staff here too that I may call up to give some more details, but it relates to the agreement to have a partnership with Buffett Early Childhood at the location that is directly north of Kennedy Elementary. It's where the Midwest Box Company used to be located. That property was purchased through the 75 North Project, and this is an agreement to work in partnership with them to allow that early childhood program to be built next to Kennedy Elementary, where I see Mr. Gunter here, the principal at Kennedy, to provide early learning for our students in that part of our community, and actually, I think it is, I'm glad Mr. Pearlman did bring our attention to it, because it is an incredible asset. As the board knows, we have partnerships currently at Gateway, Skinner, Kellum, and Indian Hills, and all of those have early childhood centers that are somewhat like this model, very, very much the same, and we see young people and their families served incredibly well, and it's a, certainly another example of a private-public partnership. And I might ask Melissa to give us a little more details, and Georgia, from Early Childhood, I see them back there. It was a lengthy contract negotiations, figuring out how to do this with the purchasing of the land, and deeding it over, and so it's been quite a journey, but one that at the end of the day is going to serve the needs of our early childhood students next to Kennedy Elementary School.
Good evening, President Snow, Vice President Merrick, Superintendent Evans, and members of the board, and thank you, Mr. Pearlman, for giving us this opportunity today to so proudly share information regarding the Early Learning Center at Kennedy. One of the things that happened in April of 2015 was this board so proudly and unanimously voted to approve a partnership with Kennedy Elementary School and 75 North and some other partners. And at that time, the dream was to create the, I'm sorry, the cradle-to-college pipeline to ensure that all of our students living in the Kennedy area are prepared to be successful in this world. And so, with me tonight, I do have Donna Dobson, our Director of Elementary Education. She is to my right. Next to her is Mr. Tony Gunter, the principal of Kennedy Elementary, and then also Georgia Brazda Witters, who is the coordinator of early childhood, and both Georgia and Tony are excited to share specific information with you regarding the Early Learning Center, and so I'm going to invite them to the podium at this time.
I just want to, again, thank Mr. Pearlman for giving us this opportunity. It's not often that we get to address the board about early childhood, and it's, of course, my passion. I apologize to the board because I have a very weak voice tonight, and so I'll try to do the best in addressing any questions or comments you may have about this project. As Mr. Evans eloquently stated, this is a very strong public-private partnership that we have with a number of donors in the community. This is the fifth state-of-the-art facility that we're building. We will say to you that we're enthralled that it will be providing 164 infants, toddlers, and preschoolers the opportunity to receive a state-of-the-art educational experience. At this point in time, we call it early childhood care and education. Sometimes people think that this is a nursery or an early childhood setting, but quite honestly, it's a setting that is replicated throughout the country. So, you know that we have two educares here in Omaha Public Schools, those are models that are replicated throughout the nation. There's research that indicates that children that participate in edicare often outsee their peers because they've received quality care from a young age. So, for us to have the opportunity to have five of them in OPS is remarkable and outstanding. I can't tell you how thrilled I am. It was a lengthy journey to get to this point. It was not because the partnership isn't strong, it's just because we had a lot of entities involved. We had 75 North, we had OPS, and then we had the Buffett Early Childhood Fund. So, lots of people had to come together and work through some new arrangements. What will happen when the new center is built is the infants and toddlers will be hired by the, what we call the Omaha Early Learning Center, the Nebraska Early Learning Childhood Collaborative. That is not an OPS entity, that is a private entity that I collaborate and Donna collaborates with often, so they will hire the teachers and the educators for the infants and toddlers. What we will do is we will move the preschools that are currently housed in Kennedy into that facility, and we're hoping that we will be able to find funds to additionally open a fourth classroom. So, that will leave Tony with some additional space in his school, that he can think about what he's hoping to do, which I believe is he's thinking of having more early childhood classrooms in his building, but we haven't quite discussed that entirely. It's a program that's based on research, so the early Head Start and Head Start performance standards are what we're following in our OELCs and educares, and they are also partners with us in helping OPS think about our practices as we move forward in educating our three- and five-year-olds. At Gateway was the first time we actually combined our staffs, and we learned a lot along the way, and right now, we're sailing through that partnership very clearly and steadfast, and as we move forward, we've learned a lot about what we're going to be doing, and I'm just excited for this opportunity. If you have any particular questions about early childhood, I can answer those for you, otherwise, I'll let Tony talk a little bit about his perspective. Questions?
Well, I do have a question. And first of all, thank you, that's very impressive for, you know, I pulled it off the consent agenda, so for you to be able to present this way, thank you very much.
Of course.
You know, as a parent who's privileged to have a pre-K student in OPS right now, it's just remarkable, and I love seeing any expansion of that to give more families more choices to come to OPS, you know, it's what we do, but can you explain to me if it's, what we're doing here is akin to other pre-Ks that already exist in the district, I mean, is it traditional, is it traditional pre-K?
Yes, and you mentioned something that I really want to draw attention to, and whenever I get the chance, I feel it's really important for me to state this to the board to help you understand. The Research Office provides us a lot of detailed information about birth rate, so every year, there's approximately 4,000 births in our school district. So, if you extrapolate that, that's about 8,000 three- and four-year-olds that live within the bounds of OPS, but we only provide 25% of that 8,000 an early childhood experience. And so, right now, we're going through early childhood application days. It's a very tiring time for me because I have to help families understand what our program is about and that we're need-based. So, I thank you for that, and then just to say that our pre-K program is very similar across the district to what you're going to see at OELCs or edicare. The only difference being that it's primarily birth to age five. Did you notice that, Donna?
Yeah, I just wanted to jump in and add to highlight, as the question about programming, we follow the Head Start standards, and so all of our pre-K classrooms, whether they're early childhood, special ed, pre-K, Head Start, or inclusive, they all follow those standards. So, we have the same curriculum that is consistent throughout the district, if that answers your question.
But even as you witnessed tonight, a key piece that we bring is that unique experience, like our three- and four-year-olds playing the violin. So, all of our early childhood students have a chance to have that experience, to really, you know, explore different ways of learning and get an early exposure to the arts.
The other thing I would say to that is, we know that the sooner we begin, the better for a child's outcome. And so, the idea behind the OELCs, particularly at Kennedy, is that we are drawing those children from the neighborhood. So, what I mentioned was 25% of our eligible three- and four-year-olds are enrolled, but because we don't have an early childhood classroom at every school, we have to prioritize the neediest. Well, because of our OELCs, we have a true birth-to-grade, excuse me, kindergarten pipeline and beyond, so that when we open up these OLC, these will be Tony students and siblings that will be enrolled. So, that is a difference.
And currently, in most of the setups, the kids, they go to the early childhood center, then they're kind of dispersed back to their home schools. Well, we're targeting home school attendance area, and as we do our research, there's probably close to 1,500 kids that's school-age ready right now, sitting in our community, fifty, or close to 1,500. So, we try to go out, recruit, and try to get them all in, but we can't service them all. But I think the bigger picture, this is the collaboration we have with the mom-and-pop daycares out there. So, this is a facility that will help support them in their practice and learning, and their supportive children that we're going to get anyway.
And yes, on the second floor, one thing that's new and unique about this center is on the second floor, we have a training facility, and this is a new partnership with the Collaborative and with the Buffett Fund to provide outreach to the childcare community, because we realize it is difficult for us to provide education to all the children, and so the idea is that we're building partnerships with them in the community and training and learning together from each- the community and training and learning together from each other. There's a lot they can bring to the partnership to teach us here in the public school setting, and hopefully, a lot that we can share with them to provide better outcomes for students. Yeah.
Mr. Smith.
What are the plans for parent engagement, especially in that area and that population? What's been effective with some of the other learning centers, and what are the needs that you see that need to be addressed before we even start?
I mean, I guess there's a lot of things we talk about parent engagement. We look at supporting different types of wraparound services and educating parents and providing support systems within the school and within the community. Currently, we're working on a strategic plan to go out into the Spencer Housing Development Area specifically because there's not very much engagement going on right now. There's a new leadership there, so we're going to tap into that particular resource because there's a lot of kids that aren't in school right now and try to get them there. But through the actual early learning program, there's a lot of things that we do to engage parents. And even in about two weeks, we have a parent event where they come up and just work and play games with students and work on social skills and social-emotional learning.
And related to that, our, I'm sorry. I need to give a shout-out to Mr. Gunter in regards to his tenacity of going out and engaging the families. Two years ago, when he was in the planning phase, we wanted to increase the number of students in his building in early childhood because we didn't have a large percentage. A large percentage were coming from other buildings. And the best way that he did that was face-to-face. So he went classroom to classroom, talked to all the kids, and just asked them, "How many of you have a two-, three-, or four-year-old brother or sister at home?" Took that data, went back, looked up all the addresses, and then went door-to-door, face-to-face, recruiting the families. And so when you talk about parent engagement, community engagement, that's the number-one way to do it, is that face-to-face being in the community, and he has consistently done that year after year. So just to be congratulated publicly, Tony.
Dr. Holman.
Thank you. Correct me if I'm wrong, you said you would have enough space for 164 children?
Mm-hmm.
So then if you happen to have any number of children outside of the 164 that would benefit and qualify for the services, would they then be allowed to go to other?
Right.
How does that work exactly, then?
Yeah. Without getting too technical, it's a very systematic process. I don't want to call it a lottery. It's not a lottery, but it's a selection process. And we must categorize students based on a number of factors to identify the neediest according to ESSA and according to the Head Start Performance Standards. We have to find those students that are at greatest risk for academic failure. So in Tony's case, if there are students that are in his attendance area and they meet the larger district area list, then absolutely, of course, we would. But I will tell you the reality, we currently have a waitlist of 700 students. So we never are lacking for classroom space, but yes. But we're thinking, Tony and I have been brainstorming, you know, he will have those classroom spaces open, so I think he's thinking of more early childhood classrooms.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions?
Thank you guys so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Evans, anything else we'd like to add to this?
No, I just thank them again and just appreciate the board's support of all of our early learning centers and all of our early learning programs. I remember Mr. Scanlon sharing with us four years ago some of his experiences. You served on the early learning, which was the committee that you were on four years ago? I remember you talking about.
I'm on the Policy Council for the Head Start.
Head Start Policy Council.
Yeah, the Board Liaison.
And we appreciated your updates and support of early learning. So this board as a whole has been a board that has cared about all of our young people even prior to K5. So I just want to thank all of you for that support and for Mr. Pearlman bringing that up and having us, providing us a chance to talk about it. And Mr. Gunner, thanks for going door-to-door. I appreciate that.
Thank you so much and all you guys' hard work. I will entertain a motion to approve item I-1C.
Can we do D and E at the same time?
You want to do it all together. I will entertain a motion to approve item I-1C, I-1D, and I-1E.
So moved.
Second.
They have a motion by Mr. Pearlman, second by Mr. Smith. Any more discussion? Mr. Ray, roll call, please.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Gotti.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
America.
Aye.
Pearlman.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Nine, aye.
Thank you. Moving on to item I-1F. Legislative update. Ms. America.
So you'll notice Mr. Lindsay isn't here tonight. That's because there aren't any changes to the matrix. Our committee is continuing to meet. Right now, just to give you a couple of updates, the legislature is still doing hearings on new legislation that's been introduced. February 20th is an important day because that is the deadline for senators to designate their priority bills for the year. Since this year is a short session, generally, only bills that have a priority designation are the ones that are going to be debated. So after the 20th, we'll have a better idea of what issues are specifically going to be addressed during the rest of the session. And then one last update. At our last meeting, we voted to support Amendment 1529 to LB 548, which was the OSERS Amendment that Senator Lindstrom introduced. Just to give you an update, that district staff did meet with members from OSERS and OEA and present at an OSERS board meeting to give them information about that amendment, what it contains, so that everyone is on board with the same knowledge. And as always, if you have questions, feel free to reach out to myself or Mr. Pearlman or Ms. Ryan or Ms. Gotti.
Thank you. Moving on to information item I-2A. Mr. Warnke.
Thank you. President Snow, Vice President, I'm sorry, America and Mr. Evans. This evening, we want to talk about our new energy management system that we've installed in our schools and been working on for a while. Over the years, that staff has worked on trying to reduce the amount of utilities that we use and the cost to the district by implementing and installing different energy-saving equipment. This equipment runs from anywhere from heating and air conditioning system upgrades, electrical and lighting improvements, and water fixture, water reduction fixture equipment. We also have a Trane Energy Management System we've been using for a number of years. Over that same time period, we've been having a great working relationship between district staff and the energy Trane Services. This evening, I've asked Abby Brophy with Trane Energy Services to be here tonight and to go over our new energy management system and sort of give the highlights of how we're trying to look at how we can improve the reduction of utilities and costs further than what we've done in the past. Abby.
Thanks, Mark. I'm recovering from a cold, so bear with me. I am Abby Brophy. I'm with Trane. I am the Controls and Intelligence Services Team Leader here in Nebraska. And as Mark said, I'm going to describe the partnership that we've been having over the last few years and how we've really developed this technology. So we've been the energy management system provider for OPS for 30 years now. So we've had a partnership that's really evolved over the last couple of decades, and now we're really looking at this newest technology and how the district can best implement that. We partner with OPS in a variety of different ways. We work a lot with all of the different teams in your Buildings and Grounds divisions, your Environmental and Safety Team, your Building Engineers, your Maintenance Staff. We work a lot with your District Energy Management Technician with Schoolhouse Planning. We work a lot with Jacobs as they're moving through Bond Phase 1, and we work quite a bit with your Energy Water Management Team that Virtus has really helped develop within your teams. And so Trane has a lot of different people that help support OPS in different ways because we all have different expertise, right? So what is Trane Intelligence Services? Why am I here today? We're all in this time right now, the Internet of Things, big data, GE's developing Watson for their artificial intelligence, and so energy management systems are going that way, too. Your buildings have heaps of data. They're, all of your equipment is trending information about every 15 minutes, and you can have a piece of equipment trending 100 different points. So that's a lot of information for any one person to really filter through and make the best choices. Your energy management systems are trying. They're programmed, they have elaborate software inside of them that's trying to do the best that it can. But this is really about taking that technology to the next level and making all of your teams, giving them the tools to be even more proactive. And so what does this look like for the OPS teams? We began this partnership a few years ago, January 2016, and Mark came to me, and we talked a lot about what this could look like, and the goal was to start small. Start with five buildings. Working with your teams, we identified those that had the most need. And so it was run the gamut with those buildings, right? Discover the best practices before implementing in more buildings. And as you can see there, we've grown quite a bit in the last few years. Part of that is due to the bond, and you can see that after Bond Phase 1, we anticipate 33 buildings will have this technology inside of them. So what do we do with your team? We collaborate with your team on a monthly basis. We identify a lot of different opportunities and target the ones that we feel will have the most impact. We have an energy website with live data that your building engineers are using. They're calling me and pointing out things and saying, "Hey, I found this, and what can we do better?" And we're doing a lot of training, a lot of best practices, a lot of implementing across the district, and not just these buildings, but in all the buildings, right? And one of my favorite things about working with the OPS teams is we always have two big objectives, and the first and foremost objective is always the learning environment. Your team cares so much about creating the best learning environment for your students because that's why you're here, right? And then the next step is always saving money the right way. And so some examples of what this can look like is, here's an example of Ponca Elementary. I don't, are you guys seeing this on the screen in front of you? So this is a graph where we are, we have CO2 sensors installed in your buildings, and we're trending this data. We're trying to make sure that you're getting as much fresh air as you need for your students to stay awake, stay alert, right? They're already falling asleep, they're struggling. So creating that best learning environment the best we can. And so that red line there is showing the threshold, 1,300 parts per million. When we see CO2 levels climb above that, we should be pushing more fresh air into these buildings. And Ponca Elementary was your first Bond project, right? It was a brand-new system, beautiful building, and it wasn't performing well. And we were working with the Building Engineer and your Maintenance Team and couldn't figure it out, and worked with Jacobs, partnered with Jacobs to get the air-balancing contractor back in the building, and they missed things, right? And so now, this school year, you're seeing great improvement in your learning environment in Ponca Elementary. So that's just one thing. Jumping into the energy side of it, everybody gets a utility bill, right? Your utility bill shows you a handful of things, kind of hard to understand all the different pieces. But now you're trending energy data at a 15-minute interval. So you go from having 12 utility bills to 35,000 data points at every building. That's a lot of data. So you, you know, imagine watching the Super Bowl last night with 12 pixels versus 35,000 pixels. So, you know, we all got to watch Rex Burkhead. That was great, right? So just a way to make that real for you, right? And this, again, is an energy website that all your teams have access to, that they're using already. So if I jump in on this picture here, and I think the mouse will, I'm going to use the pointer. So on the left side there, you'll see midnight, early in the, you'll see midnight of one day to midnight of the next. And green is a little bit of energy, red is a lot of energy. So these green bars here in the weekend are your weekends, and the red blocks are your weekdays. So you'll see them Monday through Friday, and you'll see your buildings are kind of starting up around 6:00, really getting going around 9:00 when your students get in the building. And then they were shutting down at 4:00, and you were shutting down even more equipment later in the evenings. And I just want to pause it for a second. I just took 3,500 data points and made it easy. So think about it being in a spreadsheet. You have to take these things and make it real. What's really fun is when you can explain this to a fourth grader, and they get it. They pick up quick, right? So the idea is to give your staff the tools so that they can perform better. And what we did with your team here is I pointed out a few things. So we were able to go in and change the schedules for the equipment, so you can really see the energy load pulled back. You can see I've identified a day where you have the teachers in the building but no students, and so you can see the difference, the energy load, when you have students in the building. And that's okay because use energy for those students. That's what you're here for. But to see the difference, that's a powerful statement. And then this Friday of this week, you can see there's no teachers, no students. That's an opportunity. That should look more like a weekend. So it's those kinds of things that we're working on identifying with your teams, say, "Let's do even better. We can do better than this." So that was Beals Elementary. This is Gateway Elementary. So this is looking at a full year's worth of data. I'm sorry, I'm an engineer, so I love this stuff. You'll just have to bear with me. So there's a lot of different things that you can see here, and you can see that throughout the school year, we really continue to work with the teams. If I point out here on the winter break, right, so you can see you had a lot of usage in the evenings, it was crazy cold outside. So your equipment's running to keep your building from freezing, safety thing, right? And then you see those weeks in between, during winter break, you really had almost no energy usage. And we trim evening usage, and we trim morning usage, and then we look at your back-to-school, and are we still having all the same energy savings that we saw last year? So this is really something that we continue to do with your teams over and over again. This next example is with Chandler View Elementary. So this graph here is also another way to look at energy. You've got kilowatts on the side here, and you've got days along the bottom. And really, all the red is trying to do is show the energy profile, energy being used in the off-hours, so on your evenings, in your weekends. And this is showing an example, we had a piece of, we had an energy load cycling every two hours like clockwork, and we worked with your teams to say, "What is that? What's going on?" Identified as a chiller, piece of HVAC equipment. And with some simple programming that your team implemented, you can see the difference a few weeks later, same temperature outside, no energy load, right? So that's a big deal, and that's, you know, consumption savings, but it's also cycles on that piece of equipment, so deferred maintenance costs. A compressor on that piece of equipment is about $30,000 to replace, so that's a big And as I'm closing up here, you know, we always come back to the dollars, right? So this is those first five buildings that we did an analysis for. This isn't all the buildings that we work with, but your electrical spend is 88% of your utility costs. So that's why we focus so much energy there. And what you're seeing here in the blue and yellow bars, the blue bar is prior to this technology being implemented in these schools, and the yellow bar is January, or all of 2017 as comparison. So these five schools alone, we saw $35,000 utility savings. And what's great about this is that's just what we measured. We implemented all of these best practices across more than 50 buildings. So if you conservatively think we saved $5,000 per building on implementing these best practices, that's $200, $250,000 a building. That's a pretty amazing impact that your team is getting to have, and those are dollars, you know, that are going back into other projects. So finally, you know, the whole point here was to tell your good story of what your team's already doing, right? Partnering with us, we're doing a lot of training, using this cutting-edge technology, really stepping into being proactive with your Green Schools Initiative, saving money the right way, and as always, really focusing on creating the best learning environment. What's really awesome about this is that this is something we've been talking about. We have the curriculum built that we could adapt to be inside the OPS classroom, that this could be part of your STEM programs if we partner with your curriculum development. So that's all I had. If you have any questions.
Thank you. Ms. Gotti.
All right. So I have, I do have a couple of questions.
Yeah, absolutely.
No, this was really impressive, and I know we spent some time a few years ago talking about this. So that's pretty cool to see this come back and just to think about the data that's available in all of these really smart systems, right? So I have a couple of questions. Is there, specifically thinking first about water, and so I remember driving by a school, and the sprinkler was broken, and the water was, you know, pouring down the street for several days, and I finally called the secretary and said, "I think you guys have a problem." Is there some type of reporting that would say discrepancy reporting that either that Building Engineer or someone gets that says, "Oh, looks like we have an issue here that we need to address?"
Absolutely, yes. So I know Virtus works with the Energy Water Management Team. They do a lot of that analysis for the Building Engineers. This does as well. We trend the electrical data, we also trend the water data, and the And the idea is to find those discrepancies and to identify opportunities in both, absolutely.
And then my other question is, and I think it goes back to when teachers say to me, "Okay," or I get an email that says my classroom is freezing.
Right.
And so I know that everything's managed at the district office, and sometimes there's that transition between when the weather was warm to when the weather gets cool.
Right, absolutely.
How have we engaged staff in buildings to be aware of what you're doing, to be able to communicate to the, to their team, whatever that is, whether it's the principal or the building engineer, to say, "Oh, wow, you know, we could be more efficient here. Maybe we just haven't, they haven't noticed that their conditioning is still running, and it's now 60 degrees outside." So I'm just wondering what we're doing with our own staff to be able to really make use of some of this amazing data?
So we partner a lot with your building engineers. John at Chandler View calls me up and identifies things all the time. We don't, we don't work so much with the principals. If we move into the curriculum side of it, that absolutely is our intent. And sometimes, we're working with those building engineers and they're going back to their principals, and they have these reports and they can share these reports. So we work a lot with the building engineers. We're not to the level where we're with the principals yet, but...
Yeah, as Abby said, we're working more with the building engineers. And they have the access to this information on their computers at their desks. So as we're progressing and giving more training to the building engineers, that they can understand this and respond, they should be able to take that. And we're working with them to take that back to the teachers, back to the principals, to help them teach, I guess, in a way, the staff in the building what's actually happening in there with temperature changes and different things. So it's a slow process, but it's a training process that we're working on.
No, that's, that's great to know. And I think just from the teacher's side, if they know there's somebody there they can go to in the building to say, "Hey, I wonder if it's time for us to make this adjustment." It just, it just seems like there's so much data here. And, and someone may say, "No, it's, this is just, you need to, I don't know, wear a warmer jacket or something." I don't know.
Yeah, even though this, the service center controls the overall temperature or settings, there is a, I guess, a high and low setting that's set in the building that the building engineers can adjust within. So it's not that we control everything. We just set the high and low points, and they can work within that with individual teachers. If they have like heat pumps in their rooms, they can adjust those. Or major systems like borders, they can adjust the whole building. But we give them the high and low ends of the band to work within.
Good to know. Thank you. Thank you so much for the presentation. Great information.
One second. You guys can't leave right now. I've got a question. So, I mean, great presentation. I appreciate everything that you guys and the work you've put into this. Just two questions. What are the next steps with this partnership between the two OPS and Trane? And is there a plan to implement this district-wide or something?
A plan to implement district-wide is, as the bond program or projects continue, we're planning on implementing the real-time meters on electricity and water and install the software and give the building engineers the training as we move into schools. So I believe it was Bell Ryan in Western Hills had the real-time meters installed. And they've just moved in, so we're still working with them on teaching the building engineers on that. And I guess that's where we're at right now, just using the bond program to expand it out.
Okay.
And other updates you're doing?
Yes. Thank you so much. It's always good to know what else you guys are doing moving forward. Hopefully, we can continue this. Thank you guys again. All righty. Item J, received reports. District English Language Learners and Refugee Report for 2017, '18. We have 19,577 students that speak other languages other than English. That makes it about 39% of our entire district. So we are growing with that, our population there. And I believe the languages spoken this year are up than the previous year. It's 119 different languages spoken. So very diverse and ever-growing district. And thank you for the teachers and the parents and the staff that came out tonight's meeting. I will now entertain a motion to go into closed session.
I move that the Board of Education go into closed session for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the Superintendent, Secretary to the Board, and Legal Counsel, negotiations, pending litigation, and legal advice.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Holman. You ready? Roll call.
Smith.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Gotti.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
America.
Aye.
Pearlman.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Eight A.